Alrighty, well, it's six o'clock and with that I will call the May seventeenth city council meeting to order. And before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read the virtual meeting ground rules for the last time. Well, not the last time, but next time we'll be in person and hybrid. So Stephanie?
All right, thank you. Please make make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. When the chair asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hands. All right, roll call. Mayor Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran? Doesn't look like she's joined us. John Smart? Ken Stoker?
Here.
Stephanie, if I may mention, just FYI, Kate sent me a text saying she's trying to connect as we speak.
Okay, I'll know when she's able to connect in the minutes.
And then another note for council and Stephanie, Mayor Pro Tim may have to depart early to do a taxi. He's got taxi service from the airport. He's got to attend to later this evening and it's his bride, so he better not be late, so. If if he has to step out before we're done, he has excuse to leave the meeting, so. Thank you for letting me know about that, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
And with that, we will go ahead and ask Councilman Bloom to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. And if you give us just a second to get everybody muted up there, we'll let you go. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Bloom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bloom, much appreciated. I see Councilmember Moran has joined us, so noted Stephanie? Or attempting to. Alrighty, so with with that council, we have the agenda before you with one added change. We're gonna add an executive session as per RCW forty-two thirty one ten one C. Discussion of minimum price, which real estate will be offered with no action to follow. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The pose like sign. Motion carried, thank you, council. This evening, we have David Replug wearing the hat of Hanford Communities this evening, and he's gonna give us an update of the status of Hanford Communities. So with that, David, again, thank you for joining us this evening, and the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much to you and the council for allowing me to join you this evening. I hope that you can now see my screen and my presentation.
Yes, sir, we do have it up front.
Okay, great. Well, as Mayor Gary said, my name is David Replug. I think I know many members of the council, but I serve as Executive Director for Hanford Communities. You might also know me wearing my other hat where I serve as Vice President for Federal Programs for Tri-Dech, for the Tri-City Development Council. And I will talk a little bit, I guess, first about about Hanford Communities. I think many of you are familiar with Hanford Communities, but just a little quick background. It was formed in nineteen ninety-four. As many of us might remember, if we were living in the tri-cities at the time, there was a lot of uncertainty at then about what Hanford cleanup is really gonna entail, what it looked like, what the risks were to the community. And just a lot of maybe concern about what the what those might be. And so, very understandably, the local governments in our community decided that they needed to have a role in in the decision-making process for Hanford cleanup. And so with that in mind, they all came together to create Hanford Communities. And as it says here on the slide, the the core focus areas were to coordinate the local government's involvement, to increase public awareness, to advocate for the community's priority priorities, and then where appropriate to provide technical and analytical resources to review. I think that that has subsided to some degree in recent years because we do have a much better sense of what Hanford Communities, or I'm sorry, what Hanford cleanup looks like and what it entails. But at Hanford Communities, we have two boards. We have a governing board which sets policy for Hanford Communities, and it includes an elected official from each of the participating jurisdictions. Here you can see all of those elected officials as well as the respective jurisdictions. So we have the one of the newer members of the governing board, Councilmember May Hayes, who we welcomed to the governing board after Councilmember Bloom's years of service previously, and really appreciate both of their engagement with Hanford Communities. And then you can see we also have participation from the city of Richland, Benton County, Franklin County, the Port of Benton, the city of Pasco, and then the city of Kinnewick. And Councilmember Chuck Turelli serves as Chair of the Governing Board, and again, that's the entity that really sets policies and guidance for Hanford Communities. The Administrative Board handles all of the administrative tasks associated with with the organization. So I'll touch later on a little bit on our contract with the Department of Ecology. And so manages that as well as the budget for Hanford Communities. As you can see, again, most of the members of the Administrative Board are the executives or administrative senior staff for each of the jurisdictions. And for the city of West Richmond, we have Mayor Gary, who also serves as the Chair of the Administrative Board. And so I'll quickly just review some of the the main focus areas for Hanford Communities in twenty twenty-one, and then move on to touching on what the priorities are for twenty twenty-two and beyond. On the cleanup side, in twenty twenty-one, one of the things that got a lot of attention was the announced leak of one of Hanford's single shell tanks. As many of you know, there are a hundred seventy-seven underground tanks out at the Hanford site that hold about fifty-six million gallons of waste. Some of those tanks are over a million gallons, so they're very large. Again, they're all underground. But tank B one, B one oh nine was one of the single shell tanks. And it was announced that it was leaking about three and a half gallons a day of tank waste into the soil next to the tank. That did get a lot of attention, and at this point, DOE is not has not chosen to take any proactive measures to address the tank leak. And I think from the outside perspective and from from maybe a lot of perspectives, they might have some concerns about that, but given the context of that area, which is in the two hundred central plateau portion of the Hanford site, where literally hundreds of millions of gallons of contamination were put into the soil or Hanford's history. The decision was made, at least for the time being, that the additional three and a half gallons a day does not add a significant additional what I'm going insult to the environment that over and above what already exists. And at Hanford, it is sort of a zero-sum game where if you did devote a lot of resources, personnel, funding towards addressing that, then you might have to not do other high priority cleanup activities. And so I know that the Department of Ecology from the state side, EPA, and the Department of Energy are continuing to discuss the longer-term plan for that that leak. And I apologize in advance, my presentation does include a lot of acronyms. I wanted to keep the the bullet points as short as possible, so in order to do that, I I used acronyms, but I'll try to 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 say the entire acronym. So the second bullet point, DF Law, that's the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. And TISCER is the Tank Side cesium Removal System. And as as I mentioned before, there's about fifty-six million gallons of of tank waste at the Hanford site. Probably about ninety percent of that tank waste is considered low-activity waste, upwards of forty, forty-five million gallons. And so the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility is intended to vitrify or turn a portion of that low-activity waste into glass. Blend it with glass, and then that that solidified glass will be stored permanently at the Hanford site afterwards. And so that's gonna be an important and key critical step towards reducing the risk from the tank waste that's right now just sitting in the tanks. And so it's been a very top priority for Hanford Communities, for the community, as well as for DOE and its regulators to begin getting that tank waste out of the tanks and turned into a more solid waste form. So twenty twenty-one brought some good news in that respect, in that construction was completed for the DF Law Facility. And then the Tank Side Caesar Removal System is what is used to sort of pre-treat the tank waste before it can go through the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. And so that was also the construction of that was also completed. Additionally, over two billion gallons of groundwater was treated. One of, I think, one of the things that happens at Hanford every year that probably doesn't get enough recognition, but every year, billions of gallons of contaminated groundwater. I mentioned the millions and millions of gallons that were dumped onto the land back during the Cold War and World War Two eras. Yeah, that has, some of it has reached the groundwater, and so DOE has a very proactive enterprise to treat as much of that as possible before it reaches before it reaches the round, before it reaches the river. And so two billion gallons of groundwater was treated in twenty twenty-one. And then one of our other priorities continues to be risk mitigation. A lot of us might remember the Purex Tunnel that collapsed a few years ago. That's an example of one of those risks that are out there at the Hanford site. Thankfully, in that situation, no contamination was released and no individuals, no, no people were harmed. But it was a reminder, a very poignant reminder that there are risks out there and that we need DOE and its regulators to enable as much risk, proactive risk mitigation as possible. And so in that respect, the major field work was completed on the plutonium finishing plant, or PFP. Work was done to stabilize the three twenty-four building, which has the three hundred two ninety-six waste site underneath it. That's a very high radioactive, the T, waste site that's underneath the building. Of particular concern from our respect or from our perspective is that that building is about a mile from the Richland City limits and about a mile from the Columbia River. And so it it's proximity to the river and to the community is of concern. On the positive side, though, that that very high radioactive waste is underneath a very large building. So it's not going anywhere anytime soon, but we are we feel it's very important that DOE moves as quickly as possible to remediate that site. And so they stabilized that in preparation to remediation that's going on now and into the future. The Wesaf Facility is the waste encapsulation storage facility. And that's a facility that holds about two thousand cesium and strontium capsules in a pool of water in the central portion of the Hanford site. If anybody has seen any pictures or had a chance to tour it, you'll remember it because the 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 very high levels of radiation in those capsules gives off sort of a blue glow. And it's very safe, safe as it is under that water, but in a beyond design basis event like a major earthquake or something like that, if the if the pool was to to crack and the the water was no longer there, then it would be a real safety issue, would be a real risk. And so DOE is working to move those capsules into dry cask storage, similar to how we store our spent commercial nuclear fuel. And it's a much more stable form and safer, so that's been a high priority, and so they continue to work on that. And then remediation in the one hundred K area, which is one of the last reactor areas that has not yet been put into interim state safe stores or cocooning. And so they worked to prep the K Basin for cleanup as well as prep the K East reactor for cocooning. On the policy side, one of the things that we've been very supportive of is DOE's efforts to change, sort of change the way that that they interpret the definition of high-level waste. Previously, they had very conservatively managed to manage all of the defense waste, which is what Hanford holds as high-level waste, wherein in reality, most of that waste is not high-level waste. There is definitely some out there, but much of it is low-activity or mixed low-level waste that doesn't need to be managed and treated in the same way that high-level waste does. And so DOE's new interpretation basically says that they will manage the waste based on its physical characteristics rather than where it came from. An analogy might be that you recycle a seven-up can or bottle based on the fact that it's a plastic bottle, not because you got it at Seven-Eleven versus if you got it at Safeway. Now, there there has been some pretty strong opposition from the state, the Department of Ecology, the Attorney General's Office, as well as some regional tribes. And so that's going to be an ongoing issue that we're gonna have to continue to work on. DOE has said that they that they do not intend to use that interpretation at Hanford until there is more alignment on that issue, but they are moving forward with a couple of trials at at the Savannah Riverside in South Carolina. The other thing that got a lot of attention last year was the proposed elimination of PILT funding. PILT is Payment in lieu of Taxes. And that is funds that the Department of Department of Energy provides directly first to the counties. Benton County, Franklin County, and Grant County, because since it is the, it is federal land, the local governments can't tax or collect any revenue from the Hanford site, so PILT is intended to sort of compensate for that. And most of the funding doesn't actually go to the counties, it goes mostly to schools. I think the largest single recipient is the Richland School District, as well as hospitals and veterans programs and other things like that. So the President's Budget last year proposed completely eliminating it. We have a great congressional delegation, they worked really hard and they got that funding restored. And thankfully, in the current budget request for the current fiscal year, it it's fully funded as well, but that was an issue that we were closely tracking. And then the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, oftentimes known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, that provides sixty-two billion dollars, billion with a B, to the Department of Energy primarily for clean energy-related work. That doesn't directly relate to Hanford cleanup, but there might be some opportunities to do some of that work at the Hanford site. And as many of you might know, we also have a very active effort to support other clean energy initiatives in our community as an economic development opportunity, as a way to help to decarbonize and to to create long-term jobs. And so that's something that, again, that we're looking at where there might be some opportunities to implement some of those programs at the Hanford site. One of the things we're talking about now is increasing the electric vehicle fleet at Hanford and maybe putting in some charging stations as well. The, on the contract side, the Integrated Tank Disposition Contract, or ITDC, the process of is of creating that new contract began in twenty twenty-one. That new contract will be one of the prime contractors, a lot of us are familiar with HMIS or WRPS or CPC Co. And that, or Betel. And so this new contract will operate both the tank farms that WRPS does now, as well as operations of the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility that I mentioned earlier. It's a very large contract, it's orders of magnitude larger than most of Hanford's prime contracts. And so DOE is in the process of going through that, the proposals that were already submitted. And sometime this year, they're likely to choose a, choose a winner. And whoever that contractor is will have a significant presence in our community for five or ten years. And so we're continuing to engage with DOE on the things that are important to the community, like small business subcontracting, community commitment plans, and other priorities that we want to be included in the contract and want to make sure that the the new prime contractor will address. On the community engagement side, I mentioned earlier that Hanford Communities receives a grant from the Department of Ecology to support things like our website. I'd encourage you to go to hanfordcommunities.org, which which is intended to sort of give a high-level overview of both Hanford cleanup as well as some of the issues or the priorities from Hanford Communities' perspective. We also have produced three videos that are available on Hanford Communities YouTube page, they're also available on our website. Really intended to give people a and I think both with the website and with the video, you recognize that your average Tri-Cityan or West Richland resident may not live and breathe Hanford cleanup. So our goal is really to provide a general introduction to some of the most important issues associated with cleanup. And so, you know, if you wanted to just get a general understanding of Hanford Cleanup, Hanford one oh one, or tank waste, or WTP, DF Law, you can go there, watch a brief five-minute video, and then at least have a better general understanding. I should also mention that Mayor Gary was featured in the Hanford one oh one video and did a great job of of relating why Hanford Cleanup is so important to our community. Hanford Communities also puts together quarterly e-newsletters, and you can sign up for those again on the hanfordcommunities.org website, as well as quarterly blog posts, or monthly blog posts, and then regular social media, both with Facebook, Instagram, as well as LinkedIn to a lesser degree. And quickly, I'll try to run through the the twenty twenty-two outlook. On the cleanup side, I mentioned the Tank Side Caesar Removal or TISCER. Operations began in early twenty twenty-two of that facility, again, to pre-treat the tank waste in preparation for a Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility operations. They've already treated about, or pre-treated about two hundred thousand gallons, over two hundred thousand gallons, with the goal to reach one million gallons before the DF Law Facility starts up. Later this year, that facility, DF Law, should proceed with melt or heat up, and that's a very significant key step, because once those melters are heated up, they start making glass, and they won't be putting the actual tank waste through it at the beginning. But once they heat up, they really cannot be turned off until they're 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 used until until they're completely done with with using those melters. And so that'll be a critical step that will likely take place in twenty twenty-two, continued risk mitigation that I mentioned earlier. And then test bed initiative is a good segue to the the next item. But the test bed initiative is an opportunity to treat some of the low-activity waste that won't be treated at the at the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. I mentioned earlier that it's intended to to vitrify a portion of Hanford's low-activity waste, but it's likely to be only about half. And so that still leaves tens of millions of gallons of tank waste that there's not really a direct plan to treat at this point. And so the test bed initiative is looking at, instead of vitrifying, can you grout that waste? Can you mix it with concrete? And again, this is the low-activity waste, and then send that permanently out of state, perhaps to the state of Texas or the state of Utah, that have stored nuclear waste disposal sites that that have, that whose waste acceptance criteria meets the graded waste from Hanford. And it has the potential to to get that waste out of the tanks much sooner and to do it at perhaps a fraction of the cost. And so we've been very supportive of at least exploring that. The second phase of the test bed initiative, which is, I think, two thousand gallons, has been fully funded and is being carried out in the current fiscal year. But that's one of the opportunities to potentially bring down the long-term costs for Hanford Cleanup. And that is a very significant concern that we have. Every few years, the Department of Energy puts together a life cycle cost and schedule report. The one they released earlier this year estimates that active cleanup will be completed in twenty seventy-eight if fully funded. But fully fully funding would mean something like three hundred, anywhere between three hundred billion to six hundred forty billion total dollars for the cleanup. If you do the math, that equates to between about five to ten billion dollars a year, every year until twenty seventy-eight. And right now, Hanford is the the cleanup site that receives the most funding, and that's a lot, but it's about two point six, two point seven billion dollars. It's pretty unlikely that Congress will be able to fund Hanford Cleanup at five to ten billion dollars every year. And so we're looking at opportunities to still effectively and safely complete the cleanup, but to do it at a at a cost that's realistically achievable, that Congress is likely to actually appropriate the money for. And so we're actively working to support some of those efforts. Because ultimately, our our goal is to have the site cleaned up safely and effectively as quickly as possible. And the other, the other potential opportunity is one I mentioned earlier, which is the high-level waste interpretation. If that could be applied at Hanford, it could, DOE has estimated it could save up to two hundred billion dollars. Even if it's just a tenth of that, twenty billion dollars, you can do a lot of other cleanup with with that twenty billion dollars. And so those are things we're we're, again, actively supporting, at least not endorsing completely, but supporting the idea of DOE and its regulators, looking at where they might be in those, those new technologies might be employed. PILT, I mentioned, Payment in lieu of Taxes, is fully funded in the President's request this year, but we want to make sure that that is fully funded in the years to come. And then the last thing I just mentioned is the the tri-cities is unique probably across the country in that we are very dependent on a deep geological repository. Most of us think of that as Yucca Mountain, which is the law of the land, which was the plan to store our high-level waste at Hanford, as well as all the spent nuclear fuel from commercial nuclear facilities. And our community is unique in that we have both the largest volume of defense high-level waste at Hanford, as well as the spent you, spent nuclear fuel from the Columbia Generating Station, both of which are destined to to go to the deep geological repository, whether that's Yucca Mountain or elsewhere. And until there's a plan for for that, we were going to have it here in our community indefinitely. And so DOE is looking at consent-based siding for for that deep geological repository. Again, it's, I I'm frankly not incredibly optimistic about about anything moving very quickly. But again, based on the importance to our community, that is something that we're very interested in and in both talking to DOE congressional offices and about and tracking very closely. And then, I think this is my last slide. I did share with Stephanie, and I think you might get it if you haven't already, but Hanford Communities puts together our issue agenda every year that identifies all of our priorities, many of which I've touched on before, but it's also available on our website. And then, again, the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility, the Wesaf Facility, the three twenty-four building, the High-Level Waste Interpretation, are all near-term cleanup projects that that are really high priorities for Hanford Communities, looking at where there might be opportunities to use that high-level waste interpretation at Hanford. The the regulatory approach, which we think probably needs some work, I think the we we would like to see alignment and we would like to see the Department of Energy, the Department of Ecology, the EPA, the community, the tribes and regional stakeholders really be aligned on the best way to enable cleanup cleanup at Hanford as efficiently and effectively as possible. And right now, we don't really have that alignment, and so looking at, you know, if we can take a different regulatory approach that can enable that cleanup. And then, again, the interim take disposition contract, once that new contractor is named, then we'll wanna introduce them to our community and again, share our community's priorities with them. And with that, I hopefully I didn't go too much over time, but I appreciate this opportunity to update the the council. And one other thing I would mention, too, in addition to the many other hats that Mayor Gary wears, he is the Chairman of Energy Communities Alliance, which is a national organization that works with communities that have a Department of Energy presence, so Hanford, Oak Ridge, Tennessee, Savannah River, South Carolina, and many more. But his his role as the Chair of that organization really does give the Hanford site and our community a lot of great visibility, both with senior DOE officials, with other sites, with contractors, and having senior leadership from our community serving those sorts of roles is incredibly valuable. So just wanted to say a quick thanks to Mayor Gary for his efforts and contribution and engagement on this kind of national stage.
Well, thank you, David, and born and raised in the in the community, living in Hanford all my life and for generations to come, unfortunately. It's something that I'm very passionate on, so I'm I'm honored to do what I do with ECA. I wanna, I wanna thank you especially for the the I want to I want to thank you especially for the the pilt. David was very instrumental in restoring the pilt to our to our region here by way of going to DC, working with all of our educators or schools, our delegation in DC and Energy Communities Alliance was also instrumental because it's it's a it's a certainly a funding source, it's a necessity for our schools, our our mental health programs for our military veterans. It's a, and and so thank you, David. You you rocked it on that one because without you and your efforts, I don't think we could have got there. So thanks again on that. I'm going to touch base at the end of our meeting, David, about some the tours of the site that's open to backup with site manager Brian Vance is going to offer to elected officials. So later on in the meeting towards the end here, folks, I will council members, I'll I'll give you the the Paul Harvey on the upcoming tours available to council members and senior staffers to really give you an overview of what everything David touched on. And I think a lot of you in council and there are local council members are very well aware of what we've got going on out there. And I thank you all for everything you've done in the past at the Hamford site and or and or PNNL. So David, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. If there's any other questions that council might have, I'll I'll direct them to you and your staff at Hamford Communities and Tri-Deck Building.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thanks, David. Hey, council, with that, we have the consent agenda before you, which includes the payment of the bills. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 3, 2022. Motion to award Intertie Booster Pump Station HVAC project. Motion to award well number two well drilling and decommissioning project. Motion to amend JUB on call engineering services contract. A motion to amend the curb reimbursement agreement with Bettenaria. Motion to execute excess materials agreement with Bettenaria. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute professional services contract with Evergreen Storm H2O for non vegetated biofiltration swale research study. Resolution 2922, setting a public hearing date for the six year 2023 to 2028 tip. Resolution 3022, resolution to set a public hearing for vacation of 0005-2022. Resolution 3122, amending the 2122 salary schedule. If there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to our consent agenda this evening, could please raise your hand or star nine if you're by way of phone clerk will recognize you and you can speak to the consent agenda this evening. Stephanie, I do not see anyone on my screen. How about yourself?
I do not see anyone, no.
With that, council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion at a second. All in favor, say aye. The same sign, please. Motion carries. Thank you, council. This is the opportunity for our first public comment this evening for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to provide comments to council, please raise your hand or star nine. And Stephanie will recognize you. I see no one for items that are not on the consent agenda this evening. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
That we're going to go ahead and move on to item AA is an ordinance amending the city's residential site development standards table and our associate planner Alicia Ransom will present her staff report this evening. Alicia, if you would, please.
Evening, everyone. The applicant Christie Batteola with harms engineering has applied for a text amendment to amend 17.54.050.1, which is the residential site development standards table. On the proposed development, well, the proposed amendment would amend the lot dimensions and setbacks of like development standards table, but would not change the allowed density in the area. While in the RM6 zone. The and this would particularly affect townhomes and row houses in the RM6 zone. The specific things that the applicant has asked for, which you can see the full text in attachment five of your agenda is to add a row for lot width at street frontage for townhouses and row houses. Designate the minimum lot width at street frontage, which would be 22.5 feet. Add a row for front yard setbacks for townhouses and row houses. Designate that the minimum front yard setback would be 15 feet for the main structure and 20 feet for the garage. Add a note stating that the maximum lot coverage would not apply to townhouses and row houses. Harms submitted this amendment to revolve some issues that there are with the current table. But the current to men, the well, the current dimensions in the table. The minimum lot size currently is 1,800 square feet. The minimum lot dimensions are 30 feet wide by 80 feet deep, which would allow for a 2,400 square foot lot. So the minimum lot size and the minimum lot dimension do not match up. Additionally, they're asking for that item for the minimum front yard setback would be 15 feet and the main structure would be 20 feet. That was the 20 feet would allow for onsite parking in front of the garage, which the which all units are required to have two parking spaces per unit offsite. Off street parking. That and that's excluding garage. So that's according to 17.57.020. So they have they have to provide that onsite parking as part of the development standards. The lost my train of thought. The Community Development Department issued a determination of nonsignificance on March 31. A notice was sent, was posted on the public, the city's website. And in three public posting places on April 19th, advertising the public hearing help before the planning commission on May 5. The notice was also provided to the Department of Commerce. Public Works had a chance to review the proposed text amendment and said stated that they had no comment on the proposal. The proposed amendment was discussed with the planning commission on April 14. The they believe that the amendment would provide additional clarity to the to developers that are looking to build townhouses in our six zone. The setbacks for the garages at 20 feet would provide room for off street parking. That was the topic of your discussion that they wanted to make sure that there would still be room for off off street parking. It was discussed with the CD subcommittee on April 26. They also appreciated that the additional, there would be additional clarity for developers in making the code more consistent. They discussed that this amendment would not increase density, which was very important. There's still, they're still limited to those that nine units per acre. That's in the residential development. The residential site development standards table currently. And the CD subcommittee agreed that the proposal should move forward to a public hearing in front of the planning commission. That public hearing was held on May 5 by the planning commission. They received no public comments either written prior to the meeting or in person at the meeting. And they voted unanimously unanimously to recommend that council adopt the adopt the changes. Is kind of to summarize this. This proposed amendment will resolve the inconsistency currently in the residential site development standards table. It will facilitate the development of missing middle housing, which we're we're trying to support. It will not increase density. They'll still be held to that 90 minutes per acre standard. And the development will be all develop, excuse me. All developments will be required to provide off street parking spaces consistent with the current requirements of So, excuse me. They so based on the staff analysis and the previous discussions with the planning commission and the CD subcommittee, staff recommends that the council adopt the proposed changes to the 17.54050.1 residential site development standards table.
Thank you, Alicia. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak this agenda item this evening? If so, do please raise your virtual hand or star nine by way of phone. You'll be recognized for comment. I see I have a Christie up in the top left corner there. Stephanie, we go ahead and unmute her. Christie, you have the floor.
Hi there. Yeah, thanks for letting me comment. I was the applicant on this particular code amendment. I do think Alicia did a really good job of summarizing everything that was in there and the reasons behind it. But yeah, I'm very in favor of making this change. It will just make it a lot clearer when it comes to doing townhouse developments in that particular zone. And it wouldn't increase the the density at all. It just it just makes it a lot clearer and more consistent.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay, I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Thank you. Council may have a motion on this item, please.
I move that the council approve ordinance 08-22, which amends table 17.54.050.1 to modify the residential development standards for table for the residential development standards table for townhomes, row houses in the RM-6 zone.
Have a second.
Second, I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
We've got Councilman Fettal on a second. Thank you, Mayor Proton, break for that cleanup there. Any questions of Alicia or Eric on this particular item? Councilmember Bloom?
Yes, I've already communicated with Eric and Alicia. I was questioning the the facts that the the lot size does not require the lot to be rectangular. So there is no conflict with a 30 foot frontage and 80 foot depth. I'm not quite sure why we kept the 80 foot depth. But my my comments were based on eliminating the 30 foot frontage. That means the basically the entire frontage of these townhomes will be a driveway. Is that not what I would see? 22 and a half feet, 16, 18 foot driveway. So there'll be no parking on the street on on any of these areas. Is that correct, Eric or Alicia?
Eric, will you go ahead and take that, please?
Yeah, you bet. No, that is would be correct. It would be very limited. That what but I'm not, I'm also assuming that in order to meet the nine dwelling units of the acre, that every lot cannot meet that minimum standard. This just gives them that variety and opportunity to have some that are smaller and meets the minimums. And then those that are on the corner lots would be larger in size. So this allows for some variety in in the townhome types that they build. But for sure, those that are in the middle would be very limited. And there would be very limited if any on street parking available. This is not inconsistent with other townhome developments that we have in the community. If you go over on Belmont, just above Van Geeson, there's a townhome development there that was done recently that has virtually no on street parking within their development. They have all their parkings provided per the code, which is two two stalls per unit excluding garages. So they are meeting it and satisfying it without having problems. And Belmont, that one, they don't have a side street that they could go park on because Belmont is a no parking. There's also single family homes on Belmont that don't have any on street parking.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is I've probably at council, I've looked at more townhomes and townhome developments in other areas and this just seemed to be an unnecessary reduction in the frontage. And that, you know, based on a assumption that it's a rectangular lot, which it doesn't have to be. And I I guess that only bring this up to the aesthetics of what it looks like. Parking can be, people do have visitors. And that's all I come up with. So I just raised that question.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilmember Moran?
Yes. Thank you very much, Councilmember Bloom, for that. Because now that I I'm curious. I saw that this is a first discussion and also pass rather than a first discussion allow for a second discussion. So is there a concern where if we don't pass it tonight, if we have one more discussion on it, that it's going to it's going to affect building in some way that has already been planned?
There are applications out there. The reason why we brought it forward for action this evening is because the planning commission has held a public hearing with recommendation unanimous recommendation, the CD subcommittees also reviewed it and voted for go ahead and do pass recommendation for this to go forward. So if if not for those two items, we would be probably having more discussion. But I'd also like to mention that townhomes, I've not really ever seen a townhome that was on an odd shaped lot. They're pretty rectangular in size.
Okay. And that was a question where if we would have a second chance to go at it, I would ask if maybe we look to see, are there lots that townhomes are going to be put on that are not currently rectangles? And since this is a question tonight, then don't worry about having to ask it. If you happen to know, it'd be great. But my, I am concerned. I don't want to end up with just a bunch of houses or townhouses and row houses that have driveway in front of them with zero landscaping whatsoever and no ability to park on the street in that area. That is a very good point that Councilmember Bloom brings up.
Maybe I'll share my screen and show some examples of some townhouse lots that were provided by the applicant. And there's nothing in our code currently that requires on street parking be provided for residential uses. I just want to make sure that's clear. But that's not a requirement. The requirements are for off street parking. There's a book out there. It's a fantastic read. If you ever want to look it up, it's called The High Cost of Free Parking. On street parking is a significant cost of street maintenance. I know Ross will love to hear me touting how much cost it is to maintain streets and everything else. And so you know, there is a significant cost for that on street parking. Let me just pull up this illustration. And so let's see, are you seeing my?
Yeah, I've got I've got your screen right there.
I don't see the the color around like you normally do. So there's a site layout of some lots and some some variation there. Here's another example of what could be done. And you can see the driveways would be off to the side on one, they could off to the side on one. They could flip-flop these so that the drive, the garages are next to each other, which would give more space in between as well.
So the little the little square boxes, Eric, you see in these pictures here, those are the garages, the bit, the little ones down by the driveway?
Yeah, this would be the garage and then the driveway would come straight off of that.
So you two two-car garage?
Two-car.
Wow, two-car garage with with two two more parking availabilities in the front of the garage, right?
That's, yeah, that's, that would be the assumption is that there would be providing two cars, garages. They do need to provide again, like I s- like Alicia mentioned in her comments, that uh, our code for all residential is to provide two off-street parking stalls, not including the garage space. Um, so they would have those, those as an option as well. Um, and then here's some that have a narrower lot in the middle with larger lots to the side. Um, I would just be really reluctant on putting more parking requirement on townhomes than you are on other residential uses in the area, especially since townhomes are providing for that missing middle housing and affordable housing for people. Um, more affordable housing, I should say, maybe not completely affordable, but more affordable than than large lot uh neighborhoods. So just here's some visuals for you to look at and contemplate as you're as you're debating the subject.
So you've got potential for parking places, two in garage, two in the driveway for each unit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So in in those pictures, I just want to make sure the ones that were twenty-four inch or twenty-four foot wide, that means that the garage or rather the driveway would be twenty-foot wide and there would only be four inches or four foot, rather, between the driveways on those?
We don't need the twenty-foot wide driveway to fit two cars on.
Oh, it's not twenty foot? Okay, I thought I saw twenty foot in there. Okay, um, yeah, I and I understand what you're talking about with not wanting to make it to where we require extra off-street or rather on-street parking specifically for that. We do need to have the missing middle um as uh as affordable as it may or may not be. Right now, I think that it's important to have that. So, okay, but definitely good food for thought. I'll think a little bit while the other council members are asking questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yes, Council, um Eric and Alicia, thanks for that presentation. Um, you know, I have to say, I I it it does seem striking that there's not going to be any offs or any on-street parking, but I, one of the advantages of having these remote meetings is I've got the board up on my screen and I'm looking at Bedrock Loop off of Belmont Drive, which is the developed, um, looks like townhouse development, uh, narrow lots and and I'm seeing what I think Eric was uh uh referring to where there is very little, if any, on-street parking. And so I guess I look at this um development of townhouses and this narrow lot issue, it's really not much different than an apartment complex in my simple mind. Um, this is a step up from living in an apartment. Uh, but it is not a classical residential family neighborhood like a lot of us are used to. Um, some of us may not be used to that, but just saying that it's a it's closer to an apartment than it is a house in my in my vision. And so when you go and visit somebody in an apartment complex, and I've done this on occasion, you know, you find yourself hunting for parking spaces because they're all, they're all designated. And so you have to, it's a little bit of a challenge to find parking in an apartment complex that's not somebody else's designated spot. And so here, you know, I think I, first of all, I'd like to make the correction. I'm not sure that we're requiring double-car garages in these townhouses. Is that correct, Eric? I mean, they could just have a single-car garage.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so just to make that correction, because there was some language coming around saying that there were two cars in the garage and then there'd be two in the driveway. That's not true. There might just be one car in the garage. And then it is true, however, that we're requiring two spots on the driveway. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the code, the 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 parking code requires for all residential uses except for accessory dwelling units, which are accessory to a single-family home that has two stalls. So you, that one only has one, so that would be three for that lot. Um, confuse the situation, but so for all all typical residential uses, we require two parking stalls excluding garage space.
Okay, and so Eric, are there any restrictions as to how many people can live in a townhouse?
Uh, a family.
A a family.
Right, so how you the, you know, find out how big a family is, right? But it could be, it could be one individual, it could be uh
And there's twelve. Yeah, fifteen, sure, go for fifteen.
No, no, but townhomes, townhomes, there's a specific market for townhomes. You typically wouldn't see a fifteen-member family there. Those, you know, the typical market for a townhouse are, you know, professional, it's single professionals. Um, they are younger families uh with very small children uh or you know, people who are retired and don't want to yard to maintain anymore.
People, people.
Flexibility to come and go as they please.
Yeah, people that only have usually two cars amongst them. Uh, in general, is what I would say is the average. And so therefore, in these developments um that we're talking about here, if they don't fill their garages with stuff, if they use one of our abundant mini storage units, um, then they'll have two places for their cars and and the and one more spot for a visitor, you know, kind of, that's the way I see this on average, which actually is better than the average apartment complex uh where you get one spot or maybe only two spots per apartment. Uh, so that's, that's, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, I I would also will say this, I'm not thrilled with the idea of filling our town with townhouses. I do like the idea of having townhouses in our in our community to provide the diversity that we need. Um, but I'm looking at the RM six um zone, zones on our map, and there's huge areas of RM six currently zoned in in West Richland. And so what I would say is that I'm not against townhouses, but I don't want to see us fill all of our RM six with with townhouses. I don't think the economy or the market would bear that. Um, but it may be that we want to consider um coming up with uh you know, subzones or other concepts about where we're going to allow townhouses to be put. So I'll just throw that out there as something for council to think about. That's why we have council meetings. Um, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we discuss it tonight. But um, I I will just say that I'm I'm in favor of this change. I I don't think it's going to hurt anything. It's not significantly different from what we already have. Um, and I I still, like I said, I kind of, I like it better than filling up our streets with apartment complexes. So um, I don't have anything against apartments. I lived in one for six years myself, uh, but I'm just saying that uh that, you know, well, we need a mix of housing, and I think this will be um this will help us get that. So.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bloom, is your hand still up or is that an old hand?
Uh, my hand's back up. I just want to point out that uh those examples that Eric was showing, um, basically, I believe those sketches were showing a single-car garage on twenty-two and a half foot and the ones that showed a larger garage were on thirty-foot lots. Uh, but um again, if if you've ever, if you've had a sixteen-foot garage door, you know how much space it takes to get two cars side by side through it. And so we are talking about a twenty-foot driveway, basically, uh, maybe an eighteen. So essentially, it's going to be driveway after driveway potentially. I guess, I I don't have an objection. I just thought council should be aware of what we're approving. Um, the other alternative was reduce the uh minimum square foot to twenty-four hundred square feet, if that be the case. Uh, we're not, we're not increasing the number per unit acre. And I would guess if you had a difficult-to-build lot, you might be able to squeeze a couple extra in, but uh, overall, we're not going to make it any cheaper for anybody by by changing the frontage. Um, it will change the frontage of feet of street. That's, that's somewhat true. Uh, but the other question goes down to is if we're going to eliminate on-street parking, let's reduce Roscoe's thirty-two-foot roadway. And uh, let's, let's close it down. Um, and you know, that that reduces the pavement we have to maintain. Um, and you know, that's, that's another way of going. So I've I've seen all these developments in in the Henderson area where I own a townhouse. And so I know what a good-looking townhouse looks like, very comfortable to come to, and I know what oh, God, why do you want to live here? Type of townhouse. And I can tell you, twenty-two point five foot with a uh, with the offset twenty-foot driveway by the garage and a a little jet of five feet out into the front is not much of a appealing place.
Right. Thank you for your opinion on that, Councilmember. Councilmember Moran, one more time and we'll move on.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Smart, Councilmember Bloom, for your comments on this. Uh, and Eric for your input on that. And after hearing, um, I will say that I am comfortable with this, but I would actually be more comfortable with it if in the future we can look at, just like what Councilmember Bloom has mentioned. Um, if there are going to be roads where we are going to have minimal to zero parking on the streets, why not save money? And also save in the likelihood of those that are very likely going to be speeding on those streets. Uh, and minimize the width of those streets since we're not going to have on-street parking, or it would be very limited on-street parking because there is many times shown where if you have wider streets, especially if there aren't trees or anything else to kind of make it look like it's not as wide, that there's going to be a lot of speeding. So it might be a two-for-one. Uh, minimizing the amount of money spent on streets and also hopefully minimizing the amount of speeders if we do narrow our streets some, especially where we are very likely not going to have on-street parking. So, thank you.
And with that, we'll move on. Counsel, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, like, sign, please.
Aye.
Most encouraged. Thank you, counsel. We'll go ahead and move on to item eight B is an ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget to change how the city recognizes the ARPA funds to be received by the city. And with that, I'll ask Finance Director Aaron Glenn to present our staff report this evening. Aaron?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, uh, council. I'm presenting the twelfth budget amendment of the twenty-one, twenty-two annual budget. Uh, this amendment, as Mayor Gary said, is in regards to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, more commonly referred to as ARPA funds. Uh, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law March eleventh of two thousand twenty-one. A few months later, in May of twenty-one, the United States Treasury Department pub- published the interim final rule as a guide for governments uh on the eligible uses for spending the funds. There are four basic eligible uses. Number one is to respond to the public health emergency and negative economic impacts. Number two is respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Number three was recovery of revenue losses due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Number four was make necessary investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Uh, within each of these basic categories, the interim final rule provided a framework for determining the types of programs and services that would be eligible to spend funding on. The least restrictive and most versatile category to spending funding is the third option, which was the recovery of revenue loss. Uh, revenue loss can be sent on a very general government services, so a very broad range of items. The interim final rule provided a very complex method of determining the amount of revenue loss a government could take. Uh, City of West Switzerland staff opted not to spend resources on the complex calculation because it was anticipated the city would have had little or no revenue loss. In early twenty-two, so earlier this year, the United States Treasury Department published the final rule uh, which became effective April first of two thousand twenty-two. Under the final rule, governments may opt to take a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars in revenue loss. Another key factor in the revenue loss category is that this category has the most simplistic reporting requirements. Initially, the city had planned on using three point three million in the ARPA funds for the Well Three project under the water infrastructure category. Uh, when using federal funds for a project, there are additional requirements for both facility facilitating the project as well as reporting. And that reporting is kind of two-sided. Uh, finance has a separate reporting for ARPA funds alone. And then we have reporting uh in our annual financial report that we do to the state auditors every year. So there's basically two sides to that. Uh, with the updated final rule regarding revenue loss, staff is recommending using the entirety of the ARPA funds uh for general fund salaries and benefits. Uh, there are three key benefits of going this route. Uh, number one is the reporting requirement for revenue loss is more simplistic. This is going to reduce finance staff time completing the annual report. Number two is staff anticipates that all these funds will be you be able to be utilized for the year of twenty-two. Um, this would reduce the city's auditing costs because uh of the federal single audit would only be required for the one year. So a single audit is required anytime you have seven hundred and fifty thousand or more of um federal funds uh used. So if we could uh use the full four million in the one year, that would save us, could potentially save us from audit costs down the line. And the third reason, the city will be able to continue with the Well Three project, but change the funding source to the general fund monies. Uh, this should reduce the amount of requirements, both reporting and constructing, by removing the federal component of the water project. So as outlined in attachment B, for uh general fund, this amendment would recognize four million one hundred and fifty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars in revenue as a transfer in from Fund O six. This appropriates three million three hundred thousand dollars of a transfer out to the four oh one for the Well Three project. And it recognizes an increase in the ending fund balance in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars. For the uh coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, oh six, uh, this would recognize a reduction of a hundred and eight thousand as a yeah, a hundred and eight thousand as a correction to the total ARPA funds the city uh will be receiving. Uh, it'll remove the three million three hundred thousand dollar transfer out to the four oh one fund for the Well Three project. And it will appropriate the four million one hundred and fifty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars to transfer out to the general fund for salaries and benefits paid out of the general fund. For the water sewer fund four oh one, uh, this will change the funding source of the Well Three project from Fund O six to the general fund oh one. Staff recommends passing the ordinance uh for the fiscal impact. This amendment recognizes an increase in revenue in the amount of four million forty-seven thousand sixty-eight dollars and authorizes an increase in the twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations in the amount of four million one hundred and fifty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars, bringing the total revised expenditures to a hundred and eleven million four hundred and six thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and a total revised twenty-one, twenty-two by your budget to a hundred and thirty-five million seven hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Hey, thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it. Uh, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass.
Zero nine dash two-two, meaning the City of West Richland, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Bino budget.
Second. A motion, a second, from Councilman Stoker. Uh, council questions of this, uh, budget amendment to Aaron? Or Roscoe could probably weigh in on it as well, if necessary. I think the federal government just got tired of trying to figure out how to account for everybody's accountability and just threw it out there to, here you go, use it for what you need, right, Aaron?
Correct. So I think that was a lot of it, the pushback from, uh, uh, when they were developing this final rule. Um, there was a lot of, um, to people in my profession, myself, uh, reaching out saying, this is really difficult. And I will tell you, when I was looking at reporting on the infrastructure side, the amount of detail going into that report for, uh, water infrastructure included, reporting on every vendor that was used, to the point of it was almost every line item that we made payment to them. So it became very extensive in the amount of reporting requirements.
Yeah, staff time, for sure. Uh, Councilman Bloom?
Would we expend these funds before the end of the year, calendar year?
I anticipate that we will. I, it's going to be really close. I, uh, ran kind of what was left in the budget. Again, I can only go back to April first with this. And it was, uh, right on the line. It was very close.
I, I just fear that November could come back and somebody want to, uh, you know, recover some of these funds, pull back.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Yes, I was just wondering something, um, I just thought of is the money that is specifically for, and where is it? Uh, for the salaries and benefits, I'm wondering, is that uh, in addition to other money that's going to salaries and benefits? Like, is that a bonus?
So this is basically taking what we have now and just, uh, not upping the budget that, the amount that we're going to spend. It's just saying, these are the monies we're going to allocate to salaries and benefits. And that allows us to continue with the water project. So that's the transfer out. We're keeping that three point three million. And then if you look, it actually increases the ending fund balance for, by eight hundred and fifty-five thousand and some odd change, which will go into the general fund ending fund balance, which I assume will be, um, part of our next budget cycle. So when we're looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that will all be included in that ending fund rolling forward.
Gotcha. So in the end, this seems like what you're saying is this is adding an extra eight hundred and fifty-five thousand and sixty-eight dollars to the general fund, not really changing what we're spending money on or how much money we're spending, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, very good, council. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Well, oppose, like, sign please. Motion carried. Thank you, council. Move on, we have, uh, for unfinished business, uh, Public Works Director Roscoe Slade is additional information for council in regards to the Collins Road engineering analysis. So with that, uh, Roscoe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, what you have before you, including your packet, was, uh, the memo from the consultant that was hired, if you recall, uh, back in February, uh, this year, I think it's February fifteenth, council approved a budget amendment, you know, fifteen thousand dollars to hire a consultant to do an engineering analysis on Collins Road. Uh, part of that was to pay the consultant, the other half was to use towards potential mitigation measures. Um, if you look at the history of this, it, it's, uh, complaint from some homeowners on the east end of Collins Road, um, right before it reaches bombing range. Um, you know, we had some traffic counts in twenty twenty that were done to assist the police department in their efforts. Um, everybody sees those tubes out there. Not only do those tubes give you the number of cars going through there, but it also gives us the speed. And so typically when we get a speed complaint, we can go put those counters out and narrow down, uh, the window or the patterns of speeding. Um, so if there's a guy driving to work or a gal driving to work every morning between five-thirty and five-forty-five, we can give that information to the police department and they can correct that behavior. So we did that in twenty twenty. Pandemic caused some issues. Twenty twenty-one did the same thing. Um, about the end of twenty twenty-one, uh, a Miss Humphries that lives on Collins sent a letter, uh, basically saying the issue was getting worse. Um, and basically requesting traffic calming, uh, some type of measures to, um, uh, I think specifically in her letter back in November twenty twenty-one was, was speed humps. And so my, my correspondence was with her that we need to do a formal engineering analysis. Initially, it was going to be done with our engineering staff. Um, those emails went back and forth with Miss Humphries, probably for about a month and a half, two months. Our workload was not getting, uh, reduced. We actually were adding more projects. My concern was that we wouldn't get an engineering analysis completed using in, in, uh, our own engineering staff. And again, thank you, council, for authorizing the fund so we can take a look at it. Uh, the big thing, um, with this, you know, we've had a few residents, um, request uh, us to try something. Try this, try that. Um, as an engineer, we don't try things. There's standards we follow, uh, when we do things. So we just don't try things. That's, that creates liability, gets people hurt. Um, and so really what, what was needed was this engineering analysis to take a deeper dive into what was going on on Collins. Um, I'm going to step back, uh, and talk about, um, speed limits. So before you jump into what's, you know, right now, everybody says they're speeding, so let's look at how to fix the speeding. But when you do the analysis, you step back and you look first at the speed limit. It's probably, you know, that road's been there, I think was constructed with a local improvement district in eighty-five. Um, I couldn't tell you the last time there was a formal engineering analysis to really look at the speed. And so that's what we did, uh, with a consultant, asked them to look at the speed limit. Uh, our Washington administrative code outlines, uh, how you, uh, establish a speed limit. You know, some of those criteria that are, that you look at deal with the eighty-fifth percentile speed. That means the speed limit that eighty-five percent of the cars are, uh, going or less. Uh, you look at the roadway characteristics, uh, pace speed. And by pace speed, it's looking at, if you take the highest percentage of, uh, vehicles that are traveling within ten miles an hour of each other. This is probably really, it's really important. This one deals with safety. Um, think about being on the highway that's posted seventy miles an hour. You want the majority, that highway flows really well if you have everybody doing seventy, seventy-five. Everybody's within a ten mile range. What happens in a two-lane highway when you come up against somebody that's doing fifty-five pulling a trailer? Everybody bunches up and, and whatnot. So pace speed is a ten mile an hour range that you want to see about eighty percent of those vehicles on that street or more within that ten, ten mile an hour range. Uh, the other thing the WAC talks about is roadside development. What kind of, what do you have there? Um, is parking allowed? And really looking at crash history. So that's what goes in, the WAC says, to look at when you're, uh, establishing or amending a speed limit. Now, when you look at a speed limit, what, what is a speed limit? And, um, it's a, it's a balance between travel efficiency and safety is basically what it comes down to. Um, you know, and, and what makes a rational speed limit? And this is important when you're looking at these things. It's one that's safe, uh, one that most people consider appropriate, not all, most, um, will protect the public and one that can be enforced. So keep that in mind as I go, uh, forward, and I'm going to talk about the consultants. I'm going to talk about, uh, Chief Majetics, uh, City Engineer Andrew Woodruff and myself on kind of how we took a deep dive with the utility subcommittee. We actually met twice after we received this memo that was in your packet to take a deeper dive into it. And, um, those residents on that east side of, of Collins, I've dealt with numerous times for various issues over the last twenty years. So I've got a personal relationship with each one of them. So I did take a deeper dive with this and took our time in looking at this to try to come up with, um, some mitigation measures. So when you look at the analysis that was done, you know, there's, if you Google, um, this type of stuff, you can find all sorts of studies that were completed telling you, you know, you need narrower streets, you need to prohibit this, you need different types of traffic thing. Um, a lot of those, I don't know who that person is. I, you know, anybody can put an article out. Um, you know, when we're looking at these things, we follow the Institute of Traffic Engineers. That's a national I T E. We're dealing with standards that were developed by the Federal Highway Administration, WashDOT, or manual, manual uniform traffic control devices. That, that's kind of the standard, uh, nationwide that we look at. Um, and not just some article that's, uh, out there on the internet. But looking at the data, so we looked at the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one data. And when you're looking at that posted speed, um, the posted speed they recommend is within five miles an hour of the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile. So posted at twenty-five miles an hour, that's not met. Another one that the manual traffic control devices recommends is that the posted speed be within, uh, be within that pace speed or that ten mile an hour range. Um, and that's only met eastbound at the twenty-five mile an hour posted. And then the other thing is that, that, um, eighty percent uh, of the vehicles that are traveling on that be in that pace range. And we were in the, uh, low seventies, so we didn't meet the eighty percent threshold at the twenty, uh, five mile an hour posted speed. Also to note, uh, had, uh, an inquiry with the police department, they keep records of accident history. So we don't have any reported accidents when we go back and look at Collins. Um, you know, we did have some residents emailed in, said there's been accidents there, cars running off the road. Uh, I'm not going to deny them. Alls I can say is if it was that type of accident, it wasn't reported to the police department, so I don't have record of it. Um, but we're not seeing, um, any, uh, collisions, vehicle to vehicle, vehicle to pedestrian, uh, vehicle to bicycle. We're not seeing any of those accidents in that history. So what the consultant came back, and again, before you start looking at, uh, solutions, is identifying what the issue is. They're coming back and what the recommendation was that that road, based on those factors, should be posted at thirty-five miles an hour. Yeah, we're going to take a deeper dive. That was, uh, you know, it, it's not, not a surprising thing when you look at that road. If that wasn't in West Richland and it was out in the incorporated parts of Benton County, that same road would have a fifty mile an hour posted speed limit, but it's not in the county, it's in the city. And so one of the things we have in our municipal code deals with the functional classification of roadways. Um, and if you recall, back in twenty twenty, we took a deeper dive when we did some road repairs on bottom end of Collins. And this was changed from a local roadway to a neighborhood collector. So it's got a little different characteristics. Um, it allows for a posted speed twenty-five to thirty miles an hour. So the consultant, while the, the analysis shows, uh, thirty-five mile an hour posted speed because of our municipal code limits it to thirty, that's what was his recommendation along with, uh, narrowing, uh, painting a fog line, basically narrowing the roadway width or the lane. Uh, right now, that road's twenty-four to twenty-six feet wide. So you've got twelve to, or excuse me, thirteen, fourteen-foot, um, lanes, if you stripe them at ten-foot width, that lessens somebody's comfort. Um, you know, on Seinfeld, they talk about the luxury lanes when you took the stripes out of the highway there. Uh, if you narrow it down, removes your comfort, people will drive slower. Um, you know, the eighty-five percentile speed on that was thirty-eight to forty miles an hour. Simply, you know, narrowing the lane, giving it a road diet or lane diet, isn't going to, isn't going to cut down. You're going to get a couple, uh, three to four mile per hour reduction on that. So that's not a, a fix-all. The other, uh, recommendation from the consultant added, uh, was additional signage. This is both speed limit postings and also at the crest of the hill. Uh, there's, uh, limited sight distance, so adding some passive warning signs at the crest of the hill when you get up to fifty-fourth there. And then he talked about a solar-powered, um, speed limit sign on that. The price that he included, they're not three to four thousand, they're probably double that, so. Um, took those measures, again, met with the utility committee. Um, one of the, um, big items that came out was safety, saying, is it really going to be safe? Changing the speed limit from twenty-five to thirty. Um, as I can say, as people are doing thirty-eight to forty now, and we don't have accidents. So I, I didn't see that as a, a factor. The other questions we had was, what's the recommended lane width? Um, the consultant came back and recommended a ten-foot wide lane. And then the last one, uh, which probably everybody's thinking is how do you raise the posted speed limit and expect people to actually go, go slower? You know, once, if you raise, if they're doing thirty-eight, forty miles an hour, at a twenty-five mile an hour posted, if we go and, and raise it to thirty, aren't they just going to do forty to forty-five? And what the engineering and the, and these, these things are showing, it gets back to the posted speed limit being reasonable in that pace speed. So if you're not posting at a reasonable speed, people will just do what, what they want to. They basically will not follow it. I mean, you're going to have a small group that, whatever you post it, they're going to do. And you're going to have a small group that are going to do whatever they want, no matter what the posted speed. But the majority or most of the people, if it's, the speed limit's posted reasonable, they will follow that posted speed limit. It's when it's not reasonable, then you're going to see what we're seeing on Collins. And what makes it unique, and I'm glad Captain Gregos joined us tonight, he can shake his head yes or no, but uh, speeding is not just occurring on Collins Road. I think we've got speeding on every city street. This is not unique to Collins. Um, you can drive down Keene Road anywhere, uh, in the tri-cities, pick a road, there, there are speeders, uh, on every one of them. Um, and it's just not because they're cooped up with COVID. Um, you know, so it's not, it's not that we have, don't have speeders anywhere else but Collins. But what made Collins unique and, and another reason for the engineering analysis is, you know, if you guys dug into the table, I know none of you are traffic engineers, but if you dig into the table, um, it's not typical. Typically, we see a few here and there, can see patterns. Collins Road, there's speeders every day of the week, including the weekends. And it didn't matter what time of the day. It could be four in the morning, eight at night. It was spread out consistently throughout the day. So it tells me that it's not the guy in a rush or the gal in a rush to get to work. It's not the high school kid getting out of school, rushing home. I mean, it's the moms running to the grocery store, running the kids to the soccer game, people going to church on Sunday. It's across the board and it points back to that the, the posted speed is not reasonable for Collins. Um, so again, this went through the utility committee twice. We had two meetings with additional information. Um, I also challenged both the Chief Majetic and our City Engineer Andrew Woodruff to take a deeper dive into the information to make sure we weren't missing anything. Um, and to give me both a short-term recommendation and a long-term mitigation. And the long-term one is, is for any kind of mitigation measure that, uh, may have additional funding that's available. You know, it's the long-term. And I asked them not to share their, uh, recommendations until we met. So I didn't want to, uh, them to skew each other and I didn't want them to see even what I had. And, um, before that meeting, I took it a step further. Um, again, I wanted to make sure that, uh, all the available resources were out there, um, on that speed limit. You know, people think five mile an hour, what's the difference between twenty-five and thirty? If you don't live on Collins, you don't drive it. It's, it's probably not a big deal, but for the people that live there, it's, it's, it's an emotional issue. And so like I said, staff took a deeper dive into this. I found, uh, the Federal Highway Administration. They have a program that was developed by engineers, law enforcement, and researchers. It's called U.S. Limits, uh, two, and it's for local agencies to do, um, speed, speed limit analysis. Um, and so I downloaded. Um, and so I downloaded that and uh went through it, it it asks you to input a lot of information. So while the WAC has, you know, six or seven items. This one had a a lot more, I mean, it wanted to know what the existing route, whether it was developed or undeveloped. It wanted to know the area type, whether it was a neighborhood or residential collector. It wanted not only the eighty five percentile, it wanted the fifty percentile. It wanted to know the length of the roadway section we're looking at, you know, so um it wanted to know terrain, so it got in involved with the slope. Uh, average uh daily traffic, want to know the posted speed limit. Um, and I wanted to know if the road was in a roadway section that was transitioning from uh a developed area to a non-developed. Um, it had a um category of roadside ratings, you know, what, you know, are there hazards on the side of the road? Um, or do you have a a wide clear zone that if you went off the road, you'd have time to uh correct? Uh, number of lanes, number of driveways, crash statistics, whether it was on-street parking. The extent of bike and pedestrian activity. Um, adverse alignment, um, and really dove into whether any kind of uh. Statutory requirements like our municipal code that limits this type of roadway to maximum thirty. I I ran that program, uh, I think four or five different times. To see whether it was developed or undeveloped, uh, neighborhood versus residential collector. In each one of those, that software came back recommending thirty five miles an hour as a posted speed. And it gave you a little flag warning that said because we had a statutory limit of this. Um, neighborhood collector can only be thirty miles an hour, it gave us a flag that says to to drop it to thirty. So I had that in my pocket before I met with the police chief and the city engineer. And their recommendation on the short term measures um basically was posting. The roadway at thirty miles an hour, uh, doing the lane diet, which is striping, putting a fog line and making ten foot lanes. Uh, additional posting of thirty mile per hour signs up there, um, there's some large gaps between them. Uh, the passive warning signs at the crest of the hill. Uh, they both talked about additional speed enforcement. Um, with strict enforcement speed limit, so if we're gonna go up to thirty miles an hour. Don't push it at thirty six uh miles an hour, uh, strict enforcement. And then I think the key one was that this isn't an item that we're gonna go and say, okay, this is what it is and walk away from it. Uh, we want to do additional monitoring and collection of speed data, so. Um, you know, the engineering is showing this is what, across the board, this is what we should be doing. But I want to verify that with additional uh speed count, so if we put these things in and council likes to move forward. We're gonna do, put it in and then collect some more data to see what the effects of those things. And if it ain't, if it's if it's not working, then we're gonna have a further discussion to come up with something else, but what it's telling me is this, this is the recommendation. Uh, and then lastly is changing our six-year transportation improvement plan. Uh, that plan was originally for Collins Road was just a pavement preservation, you know, an overlay or a chip seal. Um, and what we came up with was, you know, those improvements that are at the bottom, we did the curb and gutter. We want to see that extended up all the way to the end and tie in the neighborhood the other side. Uh, twofold that will provide sidewalks uh through this area. Um, it will help with the runoff down the hill for stormwater. Um, but it will then uh provide the opportunity to put in some other traffic calming measures to ensure that. The traffic is closer to that thirty miles an hour uh speed rather than the forty. And so the long term measures are to uh get it on our six year tip, so tonight you set a public hearing. To discuss that, that's already been included in that. Um, but um, what that will do is allow us to pursue state and federal funds to to do improvements to Collins Road. To the tune of, I I I want to say it's almost two and a half million, maybe it's two point three to do that, and it would incorporate. In the future, um, some traffic calming measures like chicanes, relining the intersections. Uh, fifty fourth and Astoria, a lateral shift in intersections, a traffic circle at fifty eighth. And again, so some of those things are in the I T E manual. Um, the the utility committee took a deep, a deeper dive into this and really got into the details. Um, I did include that in your packet, but I've got that that stuff available, so what we're looking tonight is just kind of a. The head nod or which direction we want to go, but. Uh, the consultants recommending thirty miles an hour with the ten additional signage and the. Ten foot lanes. Um, the police chief and your um city engineer are recommending that. And that was also announced recommendation from the utility committee members that you have uh tonight after. Two, two work sessions on this, on this issue, so I'll stop there and and try to answer questions anybody may have.
Roscoe, thank you very much, it's it's evident counsel that staff is has certainly. Gone above and beyond the normal uh in this particular given situation, and I commend uh commend Roscoe and his staff and the. Captain and the chief for putting their heads together and and go on that extra mile to dig into other avenues of uh of. Of information available, so well done, Roscoe, pass that on to Drew for me if you would please, uh, council member Smart.
Yes, uh, Roscoe, um. Are there, instead of uh bring putting the fog lines and the ten foot lanes. Um, is there an option available to us to widen the center straight? Uh, in other words, narrow the lanes by moving the lanes away from the center instead of toward the center, or any information on that? That you know?
Yeah, we we, I think we talked briefly about it at the at the thing. Uh, the benefit of putting the fog line gives you a two to three foot buffer on the edge of that roadway for pedestrians. You've got a few mailbox pullouts and and driveways, so that's more advantageous, um, you know, putting. Pushing the traffic to the edge of that road, it's got an uneven edge, and so I I would. It it's not typical, typically you have a center turn lane, but um, that that was something we did uh talk about briefly on that. Um, it it definitely ten foot lanes will lower your comfort level to drive slower, so, but again, it's not gonna get us. Down to the twenty five, but with, the goal is to get it as close to thirty as we can, and I think that will will do that.
So getting a uh uh Collins Road Park Trail will help get folks off the edge of the road when they're walking up and down that street. Um, looking forward to that someday, I'll just throw that out, cause I'm an advocate for that. Um, uh, the other question I had was, do we have other roads in West Richland's of similar grade? With the similar speed limit issues, or is Collins Road kind of unique there? And what other speed limits do we have on hill on hillside roads?
Yeah, I I don't think we've got one that's this unique, that's got that, you know, this one has about fifteen hundred trips a day. Uh, I I can't tell you the last time we've had a speed complaint. Uh, on a residential street or a neighborhood collector that we weren't able to narrow it down to a few cars at at specific periods. Uh, Captain Grego, you can jump in if I, but I can't think of another street that I can say. Uh, is similar to what we've we've got the issue with Collins, um, it it is pretty unique. It's straight, you know, y- you know, go straight up the hill, straight down the. Um, you know, if I was here in eighty five, we'd have a little more uh. Curvature to that thing and started it straight up the hill, but I understand, you know, they just follow the grade up the hill, that's the cheapest way to. Install it, it was done with a local improvement district, so, but.
So, uh, one of the other ways to improve the safety on Collins Road. Um, would be to get some of the mailboxes uh off of that road, or at least make the bump outs more pronounced. Does the city have any way to advocate for that? I know that I live off of Collins Road. And a lot of the neighbors would like to have their mailboxes moved. Um, is that something we deal strictly with the post office on, or is there a way the city can help advocate for that? I've actually approached them in the past, they seem sort of resistant to any kind of change. Maybe that'll change, I had a discussion with one of the postal carriers and. And uh, she indicated that maybe if we did it to her advantage. Uh, we could get the post, post op, post or the mailboxes off of Collins. Uh, but again, I just didn't know if the city has ever written a letter of support for something like that.
Yeah, yeah, John, it's it's tough, once these uh postal spots are are established, uh, the post, postmaster can do that. Um, it's easier to get them right the first time than to try to move them. Um, people get very picky. Uh, when you move their mailbox, you may have a cluster of eight, and one of them doesn't want to move their box around the corner, because they don't have to walk to get it. Um, the the plan would be to work with the post office in that uh long term plan, where we're looking at improvements. To do like we did on uh fifty eighth, where you cluster mailbox clusters. Um, you don't have to worry about your mail theft, because it's got locked postage box for uh packages and then outgoing mail. Um, so that's that's part of that two point three, two point five million, but if there was a group that wanted to look at moving them. Uh, i- it, there is a process and the postmaster controls that, um, but we can help them, you know, if they wanted to look at a locked box, but. We definitely will be involved if we can secure construction money to to do those improvements there to to. Try to get them off the street, onto the side ones.
So my last comment is just that, uh, and I actually. Thought about this quite a bit, I mean, I I understand the concern about raising the speed limit and then expecting people to go slower. Uh, that's seems counterintuitive, I would s- point out however, that we have very few options here. Um, we we can't. Well, we can put fog lines in, um, I've heard that we can't put speed bumps or. Anything, obviously, we could let, I, here's a solution, you could let the road go and there'd be more potholes, that might slow people down. Um, just kidding, uh, but um, but you know, if we can't put bumps, you can put holes. Uh, but no, I think that the thing, the logic here is that if you do nothing, if you leave it at twenty five miles an hour. Nothing is going to change, people will still go forty miles an hour down Collins Road. Uh, police can try to enforce that, but like you said, it's an unreasonable speed, uh, perhaps as of people's perception. I think that the logic that I've come to conclude is that. If we, if we don't change the speed limit, let's put it the other way around, if we do change the speed limit, at least there's some hope. Of people taking notice and correcting their behavior. Um, uh, because you know, if people were only speeding at thirty miles an hour right now, it might be different. But then uh they're speeding at, I I saw your numbers and. I I'm not sure we, I'm not sure we reported some of the highest numbers in that list. I'm sure we did, but there were, there were some, there's some pretty fast cars.
Yeah, and and just, uh, there may be some outliers out there that showed seventy miles an hour. I don't think somebody was going seventy, they're they're tubes.
I think it probably worked.
Well, I'm just saying the these tubes have, how people hit it, if you hit it at the same time. Uh, multiple axles could give you some false thing, but overall, when you're seeing consistently thirty eight, forty miles an hour, that's.
Right.
That's, that's a.
So, so just to conclude, I would just say that um, I I I see moving the speed limit to thirty miles an hour as being something that. Cannot hurt and will probably help. Um, that's, that that, that's my conclusion, I I appreciate all the analysis. It's, it's actually incredible the research you've done, and um, so I agree with the thirty mile an hour.
And and just to co- just to comment on your, the do nothing, i- i- to do nothing would open us up for a larger liability issue. Because of all the studies and analysis we've done and the engineering is saying, this is what you need to do. We have, we we have a a liability issue if we don't take an action. So, uh, I appreciate your support on this, John, we'll move on to council member Moran.
Thank you, and absolutely, thank you for all the work that you've put on this, um, Roscoe and your team and the engineers. Uh, I will say that, uh, just like what council member Smart was saying, I. Definitely believe that there are those going up to maybe seventy, seventy five miles per hour, I was driving up Collins. And I have made it my mission in the last several months to absolutely make sure that I am not going any further past twenty five. Up or down, and it has been at least three times, we're going up Collins at exactly twenty five miles per hour. I have had somebody ride my. Tail bumper, thank you. I I I almost, but I stopped uh riding my bumper and then right before hitting the. Where I turn onto fifty fourth, actually. Uh, they decide that they're gonna speed around me as fast as possible without having a dotted lane. With it being a blind hill where they can't see, and that just terrified me. And it happened more than once, at least twice, if not three times in the past couple of months. Um, so we definitely do need to do something. Um, I am curious, I I I definitely like the idea about the passive warnings. Um, it sounds like it's a lot for a speed limit where it actually indicates how fast you're going, but I'm wondering. What the cost of something like, uh, just a regular speed limit sign with just flashing lights that are solar powered around it, that just flash. As long as they can with their power, just so that it brings people's attentions to this speed limit sign and go, oh, hey, it's that speed. I'm in favor of changing it to thirty, um, especially with the issues that I've seen other people. Uh, having with me going twenty five miles per hour, I'm wondering with the fog lane, rather than doing a fog lane, is there a way to do an actual? Bike lane on one side that could be complimentary to a trail that. Will eventually be going next to the road for walkers and for people with families that are biking slowly. Is that a possibility? Because I know that you're saying the fog line would be two to three foot, that's not enough for a bike lane, but if we combine that into. Almost six foot, would that be enough for an actual bike lane?
Yeah, Kate, I I hesitate from doing that, uh, you know, you'll, you're, would be encouraging bikes to use one side of the road. Uh, if you were to look at that, you'd want it on both sides, and and the the edge isn't even, so I I wouldn't want to stripe it as. As being a bike lane, now, when we widen it in the future, uh, and build that out, there's some opportunities to look at that. Um, and incorporate that into the, um, cause I don't think. Yeah, I just, let's just say there's ways to do it, but I I would recommend it with this, there's just not a consistent edge there to to do it, I wouldn't want to have bike lanes on just one side.
When you're talking about edges, are you talking about past where we have the curbing?
Not, yeah, so it's the rural section where it doesn't have the curb and gutter, you can see the edges is broken off, so in some spots, it may be. The full twenty six to twenty eight feet, and other spots you can see where. Uh, people go off the road to get their mailbox, it's kind of rotted off the edge of the asphalt, because it was just a thin B S T that was put in.
Gotcha, well, I I would definitely hope that in the future, we're looking at bike lanes along with the trail. Cause I agree with council member Smart, uh, we've got to have a trail there, there's, we're missing an opportunity there for that, um. I like that we have the sidewalks included in the six-year T I P, I like that a lot, um. Uh, I'm wondering for the bump out for the mailbox, is that something where we can in the future, where we could. Hopefully, in the near future, if we do want to codify a change to make it so that if there's a pullout, that it would have to be a certain width. That would be wide enough for an actual full vehicle to be pulled off the road?
Yeah, we've already got that standard cape for mailbox.
Okay.
Yeah, what you're seeing out there is existing stuff from the eighties, and then as other homes have been built, they just put their mailbox next to the. The ones that were there.
Well, the ones that we put, uh, when we did the road recently. We didn't require them to meet the code then, because we, it was not too long ago that that road was. Finished again and had curbs installed, correct?
It's the the bottom side, when we, that that road fell apart two years ago. And we reconstructed, put curb and gutter to deal with stormwater, so it's got, when we stripe this, there'll actually be full parking. Available on the side, it'll be, it's it's thirty six feet curb to curb.
Okay, but it does meet the requirements that we have for the bump out for mailbox parking. As it is now, if we just put the lines in there?
You you don't need a bump out from the travel lane, because there's already eight feet to, you can pull off and park in front of the mailbox.
Okay, um, all right, and then, uh, final thing, I was wondering, I just. Keyed into when you said a circle on fifty eighth. I'm interested in hearing more about this. Because I live on fifty eighth, but you did say circle.
Yeah, it's a traffic circle, so it's not a roundabout, it's a circle that you'd see in a residential neighborhood, that's small, slows people down to move around that. Um, rather than having a straight shot. Rather than having a straight shot through there.
What's difference between a roundabout and a circle?
I'll, I'll send you some things. Circles just, yeah, it's, it's, it's more for residential area. You don't have the chicaning and, and whatnot in the lanes coming in. It's, it's just a round circle in the middle that makes people slow down and kind of go around. Similar to, well, it'd even be smaller than the one that Richland just put on Van Geest and as you go into Richland. That's not a roundabout. It's more of a traffic circle. But ours wouldn't have all that, all the cones and fancy sidewalks that they put in with that. Something similar, something similar. It, there's, and again, they're measures. To break up that road to again, try to keep people down to thirty.
Right.
And not make it a straight shot or make it look like it's a county road that should, that they should be driving fifty on.
Gotcha. Sounds good. Thank you. So I guess just in closing, uh, I'm a big fan of whatever we can do for traffic calming, especially like fog line. I'd love to have bike lane if, if at all possible. I get that we can't. I would love to see maybe not the flashing speed limit where it shows the speed you're going, but just a flashing light around a speed limit sign. Just to get them focused on that extra signs, the passive light, the passive warnings rather. Uh, I like those.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, there's, we're not talking any kind of flashing light. Those. Passive warning signs are yellow and black signs. And they will have an advisory speed. That recommends twenty-five, similar like when you go in a construction zone.
Right? No, absolutely. I, 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 I've knew that one. I was, right, but I was adding that. If there were rather than having something that said what the speed limit was. If we would add a sign that would have the speed limit that just had flashing that was solar paneled, that.
Yeah, those.
Just an option.
Yeah, those aren't, yeah, those aren't, just to be clear that we're not proposing any of those. Uh, just because of the cost, uh, but the additional signs that we put out there. We do like we do in other things. We put the little orange flags on top to draw attention to, to people and it's, hey, there's something new. Look at me. Kind of thing.
So Kate, are you, you're, you're, you're. In favor of the, the directions recommendation staffs bringing forth on this?
Yes, and I was just adding thoughts that. If it was something they'd already looked at, that's all. But yes, I am in favor of the direction we're going. Yes.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and go to Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Uh, he's going to have to depart here shortly, so I want to make sure he had an opportunity for his comments. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Slade and his team for the very extensive and detailed. Research, analysis and study that's been done to take a look at Collins Road. We've had a couple offline discussions on various topics as well, dealing with. Traffic mitigation and calming measures on Collins Road. And, uh, as has been presented tonight, I, I fully support this. I was one of the initial doubters. That raising the speed limit would be the appropriate step to take. But I've been convinced, uh, the engineering sound, the research is valid. And I do support all of these steps. So thank you, Mr. Slade. I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Councilman Bloom?
Yeah. Roscoe and I have had conversations on this and. The only question I have is, uh, what is the site distance issues? When you hit the crest? I mean, what is the, is the twenty-five that we're suggesting right for this fifty-fourth and those two driveways at the crest?
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. So there'll be, as you come up to that crest, there's actually. I think there's two of them, one on the east and west side of fifty-fourth. And so there will be, uh, warning signs. Um, I, I don't have what they are in front of me. That tells you that hill blocks view or something. I can't think of what the standard language is. And then it will have a twenty-five mile an hour sign underneath it in that section.
One other question is for the fog line and, and even the, the center stripe. Is it inappropriate to use what, uh? What's common in Europe of the wave lines to try and? You know what I mean? As you come up to intersections in Europe, they, uh. What the hell's going on here? It makes people think. I, I, I'm just bringing that up that as you press. Get to that crest, you might consider just. Much like we have one wave in the middle of Collins right now that everybody notices where we went around the hill a little bit on that. Up, you know, where, where you did the improvement, it shifts a little bit. The question goes down to is, would that, you know, get people's attention? Uh, that's one, one option I'll throw out there. But other than that, I have no, I have no objection to trying the thirty miles an hour. But, um, uh, I might suggest that if that doesn't calm the speeds. We put a, uh, a, a speed menu up, uh, plus five is seventy dollars, plus ten is. Eighty dollars, whatever the appropriate number is. And I, I have some signs I can. Mark up from the old fireworks sites, so. Keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Stoker?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Roscoe, for your presentation and I certainly appreciate all the information in the packet. You know, I just got back from, uh, driving sixty-five hundred miles across country. And I'll say. I really like the idea of the permanent radar feedback sign. Um, saw quite a few of those. Across, especially in the Midwest, I believe, uh, where. You know, I've got a twelve thousand pound RV still pushing me along when I let off on the accelerator and it starts flashing at me and telling me. You're coming in too fast. So, um, that's when I realized I need to push on the brakes and. And get myself back down to proper speed when I'm coming into a different town. So anyway, I really. You've said probably it shoots me down, but you said it's a little more expensive, but. I, I think it might be worth the investment, uh, in the long run. So anyway, that was my feedback on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Fettow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roscoe, thank you. This, I'm a numbers guy. This really tweaked me, so I spent. More than, more time than I probably needed in these things. First, where was the, uh, where were the tubes located? Was it right there as you're certain to crest the hill as you come in?
So if you looked at, they were in between. The end of the curb and gutter. And then I think there's a driveway that goes to the pump station for C I D. So around the lower third of the hill, I would say. Um, and that's, you know, uh, we wanted to be consistent where we collected each year. I even went out and, uh, the beginning of this month. Wanted to make sure that the data we received in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Had nothing to do with the pandemic. And so I had him actually go do counts the first week of May. Just to make sure that nothing had changed in the twenty-two. That's why it was included in your. Packet. Uh, the data was very similar to the previous two years. So nothing's, nothing's really changed in that respect.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty clear. There's a problem. So I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, we talked, it's kind of a weird concept, raise the speed limit to slow people down. What I would say, and I know our, our conversation is right, we want to do this. Monitor it, see what happens, see if there's still a problem. What I would suggest. I'm not admitting guilt or anything here. Um, I have, uh, at a time been in a car that was driving too fast. And had a solar powered speed limit sign that flashed red and blue when you're going too fast. And the person that happened to be, uh, piloting that car, um, no names, um, immediately noticed that was going too fast and slowed down. So I would say, I know they're expensive, but if this doesn't work. I would suggest we put that on the table and put a speed limits, a lighted radar sign on each side. If nothing else, uh, to slow people down. If this doesn't work. You know, I, hopefully it works. I don't know that. You know, when people see they know, people driving this road, especially as often as they're driving it. Know it's twenty-five miles an hour and yet they know they're doing ten to fifteen miles above that. When it's only eight miles above that, the fine is significantly reduced. I'm, I'm assuming that's correct, Captain Gero, Chief Suited to be Captain Gero. Right? Is the, the, the fees less under ten miles an hour is over ten miles an hour above speed limit? So if we raise it to thirty and people continue to thirty-eight. Technically, right, we're giving them a break by charging them less in penalties. So if, if this doesn't do the job, I strongly suggest that we look at it and make it a, a. Investment in this area and putting in the lighted speed limit signs. With some flashing lights that once they hit, whenever, I don't know sure how those are regulated, but. Just so it's on people's mind, because it's, I said, I, I spent a lot of, too many hours in this data and it's. It's, it's crazy what's, you know, that people, eighty-five percent of the people on that road and it's consistent for the last two years. Forty-two miles an hour, thirty-eight miles an hour, thirty-eight miles an hour. Even going uphill, you know, it's ten miles over the speed limit across the board. There, there's definitely a problem and at some point if we decide to put sidewalks and you get more people pedestrians on the road, I see a lot of waists up there. There was a, a ladies group that would walk up and down the hill for exercise in the, in the spring and summer. So. I think we need to help the residents on Collins and. But again, I just suggest if, if it doesn't work after we monitor it, that we consider. Some, uh, you know, some radar signs. Otherwise I'm in favor of raising it. The lanes.
Yeah. And, uh, so I assume that Mayor on board as well with the counter staff's recommendation. I kind of got a consensus all the way around that. Says too. Perfect. Okay. Roscoe, thank you very much for your presentation, what you've done. So, uh, your next step then to bring to council would be?
So what, what you'll see council in the order moving forward is before we get the speed limit changed by ordinance and signs posted. I'm going to restripe that roadway, so I'll have to find out the availability. Narrowing those roads, why it's still posted twenty-five is, you know, I don't have an issue with that. So you'll see that first. Ordinance, changing the speed limit and then additional, uh, signs getting posted, but the lane diet will become first. Once that stuff's all up, again, we're going to put the counters out to see what that does. And then based on that data, we'll coordinate with the police department and, uh, if we still have some outliers. Then we'll get with the program, we will change that behavior, um, and, and do that. So again, we're not gonna. One and done. We'll continue to monitor this until we're comfortable that we've got this issue corrected. And then again, can continue to, uh, pursue funding. In the long term, um, and, and your flashing light, it's noted, um, and those are buddy, I think eight thousand dollars apiece. The budget amendment you did allows me to put additional signs. And the fog line in, it doesn't have that in, but as we go through the budget, we have data, the timing will be good. If we need to, we can add some additional funding in for the twenty-three to do in twenty twenty-three. So thanks, Council.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Roscoe, appreciate it. Again, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on. Uh, let's see to our, our new business. And, uh, as I, David re-plug with, uh, Hamford Communities, uh, talked about, uh. The site out there and with the positive cases of COVID starting to drop and. Conditions are going to allow for limited interpersonal. Tours for the cleanup of the Hamford site. Site manager Brian Vance is, is. But now they offer to mayor, city council members, city managers. From each of the four cities, uh, to take guided tours of the, of the Hamford site. This is something that would occur later on in the year. They're offering, uh, a couple of different trips a day mornings or afternoons. These would be from, uh, during the workdays of Monday through Thursdays. So if you are interested in doing that. If you would please send an email to Stephanie and we can coordinate with, uh, the management out there, which is our own, uh. Past Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Rich Buell, I'll send him that information. We'll make sure that we get everybody on buses that are, that are not, uh. Not creating a, uh, quorum. And, uh, get you out there on site and, and, and see, see things and which would include the, uh. Several facilities, the, the, the waste treatment plant, uh, the tank side sinazium, uh, removal facility, the. Groundwater pumping station treating, treating, uh. Treat system, a whole bunch of cool stuff. So if you want to go, let us know and, uh, we'll get that information to the Hamford site. And, uh, so with that, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to, uh, staff reports. If there's any staffers that have reports, uh, raise your hand and I'll, uh. I'll find you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we skipped over the second citizens public comment.
Yes, we did. Thank you for the reminder. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the second citizen's public comment. If you'd like to address council, please go ahead and raise your hand or star nine on your phone. And you'll be recognized. And make comments to council. I see no one. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Very, thank you. That was my virtual site that I had to begin with. Uh, so with that staff, any comments this evening? Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of the council just wanted to give you a quick report back on our charrette that we had last week. Uh, it was a great event. We had quite a few people show up. Most unfortunately were from the county. Was hoping for more, uh, local citizen participation. We did have, uh, most of our planning commissioners both nights for that event. We had a couple of council members show up as well, just to see how things were going, uh, and get some, just to see how. How it was all coming together and we had a great team there. Putting together a visual preferencing survey. I don't know if you saw that on the Facebook post that Stephanie posted up today. But we want to hear from the community, so we are really trying to get. Their input still trying to get their feedback. So we posted that out. You can find out more on our website at westrichland.org forward slash two seventy-four forward slash Lewis dash Clark dash ranch. So we want to hear from the community, want to see what's, what their input is. And we will continue to develop the plan and, and move along for this. Great planning effort that we're doing for the future visioning of our great city. So. Just want to report back and let you know that things are moving along. We've got some public participation events that have happened. And I'll have more to report back later on.
Thank you, Eric. Roscoe?
Uh, just two items. There we go. So, uh, the council government at our tech meeting. We got notice that the cog received additional federal funding for sidewalks and pathways. And so, uh, for the bylaws, they go to the contingency list of projects. And so we've got another project that's getting funded. We're going to get. I want to say, I think it's eighty-five thousand dollars. To design the pathway from Belmont to make that connection down to, uh, Van Geesten. So. Kate, I think you're a representative on the board, so you're going to see that. Richmond's got a project, I think. Uh, us and, uh, transit will actually get some federal funding to move the, these three projects along. So. Not exactly how the. The Fed Senate, but they do recalculate and sometimes we end up with more money and this time we did. Uh, and then the second thing's not a good thing to talk about, but. We're still experiencing vandalism in the community. Uh, most recently somebody set fire in the. Gateway bathrooms there by the Akamla River Bridge. So we've got heavy, uh, smoke damage to the interior and a mess to clean up. We're got to get the insurance adjuster, figure out the fix. So. Just as we're getting into float season, uh, the bathrooms are closed. I mean, somebody decided to start a fire in the middle of it. So. It's disheartening, great feature for the community to have somebody do something stupid and do that. So apologize, but they're locked. We're working with insurance companies to get the damage, uh, restored and cleaned up and get those bathrooms back up, but. It doesn't look like it's going to be a quick process due to the damage. So that's all I had tonight.
Thank you, Roscoe. Stephanie?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to report to council that we had our first, uh, community market. Last Wednesday, uh, in conjunction with the established food truck night. And we had a very full parking lot for most of the evening and the next one will be next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Um, and they will run the second and fourth Wednesday of the month through September. So if you can attend, it would be great. I know I saw a couple of your faces. Uh, last Wednesday, but, uh, we had a great turnout and we hope that will continue all summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and also, uh, your partner. Jaclyn for, uh, taking the reins on that. It looks like it's going to be a great success. It'd be nice to have. One of those, one of those evenings, uh, as a, as a marker for everybody to come enjoy Westford, so as do another sister city. So thank you for. Taking that on and tell Jaclyn thanks for me as well, if you would please. Taking that on and and tell Jaclyn thanks for me as well, if you would please, Captain Grego, soon to be, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council that tomorrow is Chief Chief Magetic's retirement ceremony. Um, it starts at three thirty, if you want to come by the PD and um, you know. Grant him, you know, welfare's retirement, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to council reports, comments, anybody has anything, raise your hand, I'll. Find you there. And Councilman Bloom?
Uh, just one, one note, um, Ben Franklin Transit Board voted to um, initiate free. Fairs for those under eighteen. Uh, for a six month period, beginning in June, uh, the only restriction is that uh, to. Participate in the fair is to go pick up a bus pass, so we're we're setting up the uh, arrangements for that. Um, and it will be, you know, basically a bus pass for, so I, it's common for. Parents to get bus passes, well, you're not gonna get a bus pass this year, you just don't have to pay for it. And uh, it'll be six months temporarily until we get our new uh, fare collection system all straightened out, so.
Is there any news, Richard, on the uh, sales tax reduction uh, from the board?
Um, no, at this point, we're, we've got a request for a opinion from the. Secretary of State or or the Attorney General's Office, uh, which may never come. Um, there were actually two proposals, one which was to take it to the voters. Um, and the other was to just simply adjust it as the year went on, should we be collecting too much money? Uh, but right now, it's it's deferred indefinitely, waiting for the uh. Waiting for an opinion back from the Attorney General's Office and also we were going to have a workshop. Of board members so that we can get better understanding of what that means. Um, I mean, what, what the finances of Ben Franklin Transit is.
Perfect, thanks for the update on that, hadn't heard anything for a while, Councilmember Moran?
Thank you, uh, first, I wanted to ask Roscoe, are there signs on the bathroom? By the gateway park saying why they're closed, or are there gonna be just a bunch of people upset that the bathrooms are closed and. Complaining on next door without knowing why they're closed?
I'll double check with the operations if they're not, I'll have to put something there, good idea.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people didn't think that we just weren't doing our job and. That they knew that there was an actual reason for them to be closed, so thank you for that, um, I want to say thank you to those that have reached out to me, um, I am recovering well from my surgery that I had on Wednesday. Wasn't a big thing, but uh, thank you for those who reached out to me, I'm very glad to hear that you found out about that extra federal funding from uh, Ben Franklin Council of Government, so. Definitely I'll be looking for that, Roscoe, um, on May fifth, I attended the community leaders Hanford virtual tour. It was a really great opportunity to see that the community leaders were given to see what's going on out there at Hanford. And it was a virtual tour, so I got to do it from the comfort of my home, which was really nice, um. On the ninth, I want to thank you, Captain Grego, for putting together that meeting, it was really great to see you again. Uh, and we just got to talk about the the things that you're looking forward to for the department, and I am really looking forward to it as well. I think that you're, we're, we're on a really good road, we're just continuing to do good with this, so I like it a lot. Uh, that retreat that was on the tenth, I appreciated that, the council retreat that we had, um, I'm looking forward to more discussion. Unfortunately, that didn't mean that I missed the Port of Kennewick meeting, um, because of that, that's okay, um, I'll look back at the meeting minutes that they had. For that, uh, this Friday, the twentieth, is the first hybrid meeting that we're going to have for the Benton Franklin Economic Development District. And the Benton Franklin Council of Governments Board, um. I wish that I could have attended last Wednesday, um, but unfortunately, that was the day of my surgery, so I didn't get to, but next Wednesday, I am looking forward to being there at the market. Uh, on at bombing Flat Top Park, um. Thank you to uh, Deborah Humphries for the email, thank you very much, it's always good to get the emails from constituents, so please feel free to. Email as always, the emails are out there on the website, I did get an invitation, I don't know if anybody else did, but uh. Person, kind of a blast from the past, a fellow veteran friend of mine, Matthew Sutherland, uh, who is now a member of the Transportation and Choices Coalition. Invited me and I'm assuming anyone else that wants to attend to a Ride Transit Month kickoff that they're having at Flight Tap and Table. On June second, uh, from six to eight PM, and the Transportation Choices Coalition is in town on the second and third, and they are looking forward to talking to. Local leaders, if there are any questions that local leaders might have for the Transportation Choices Coalition, uh. Richard, if you didn't receive that, I figured that you probably would definitely want to at least know what they wanted to talk about. Uh, and that. Look through, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to give kudos to Stephanie and um, her sidekick, I can't remember what the name. Um, I went last week to the Wednesday event and I was amazed with the number. And the parking lot was full and then full and then some, and um, there was twelve plus vendors. That that were over there, plus the six um, food trucks, it was so cool to see and how many people were out there, so. That takes, I know, a bit like that, doing it, you know, every two weeks, I mean, it takes a lot of work, so Stephanie, thank you very much. I think it's really great for the city, and I think the more that we get the word out, um. About it, I think the better, so thank you, that's what I have to say, thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, and then a the final reminder from myself, I would want to make sure that everybody remembers the upcoming special council meeting Monday, May twenty third at five thirty in the Noski Room. The Noski Community Room, uh, for the squaring in of our new police chief. Uh, which was Thomas Grego, uh, congratulations, Captain Grego, uh, looking forward to uh. To next Monday, and uh, then you'll get my, then you'll get my to do list, and we'll uh, we'll, we'll keep rocking our uh, our our department. Uh, as Councilmember Rand says, we are going in the right direction, have been for a number of years and. Uh, looking forward to you taking to the next level, sir, so just remember there. And uh, with that, we're gonna have an executive session as we uh, as we mentioned, oh, one other thing, uh, next, next meeting is gonna be our first hybrid meeting is discussed, so. We're gonna run some some dry tests on that and see how we do with uh, with everything, make sure it's all going well. So looking forward to that, getting back in the room together, it was nice to have council all together in one room to have a conversation uh, at our workshop. Thank you again, everybody, for your participation, I do believe it uh, went very, very well, and look forward to our next session and. And uh, any more that might be necessary to get us to the end game on our twenty uh, twenty three, twenty four budget, so. Uh, thank you very much, appreciate it, uh, with that, we'll move into our executive session as per RCW forty two thirty one ten one C. Uh, to consider minimum price which uh, real estate will be offered, uh, no action to follow this evening for about fifteen minutes, I would say. Uh, Stephanie, if you would, so if you'd clear the uh, clear the room, thanks, everybody for participating this evening, and look forward to seeing everybody in person. Next meeting in April.